Let's call the City of Marine City Commission Meeting to order Marine City Fire Hall, Thursday, June 20th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Burkhammon.
Here.
City Manager Rutter.
Here.
Thanks. Communications, we have monthly activity report, Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, zoning board of appeals meeting minutes, and the planning commission meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to public comment, anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This is your time for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed upon as necessary.
Target in the back.
Laura?
Sorry, Joe. Okay, so I'm here to report a little bit of an update on what we're doing with River Recteen Zone. So we are slated to open the second week of August. That is, as long as we meet all the criteria, which I'm sure we will. Drywall's done, some of the painting's done, flooring's coming in. So this will be Phase One. So this will include the garage portion of it, along with the two handicap-accessible bathrooms and the handicap-accessible entrance, which will be on the side of the building. So we're excited about that. So I just wanted to give you an update and thank everybody who's been so supportive. I know we're getting, I think they're paving the parking lot in the next week or so, so I appreciate that as well. Week or two, right? Yeah. So, okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Moran.
Joe Moran, 710 Pleasant Street. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your gracious indulgence. We are still looking for some residents to apply for the Community and Economic Development Board, recently passed by the City Commission. This is an advisory board whose function will be to investigate, plan, and look for funding for projects in and around Marine City, focusing on community development and the economic development of the city. So we're looking for residents who want to get involved in that process. We've had some pretty exciting things go on in the committee work that preceded the creation of this board, and we anticipate moving forward with some exciting things for the city. So please put in a, put in a, an application with the city clerk's office, and hopefully we'll get that board staffed sometime this summer and begin moving forward with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, I do apologize.
All right. If there's no one else, for the viewing public, there's only two people here today. And they both spoke now, so we're good. Moving on to approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Need approval of the City Commission regular meeting minutes, June 6th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion support. Any questions on it? Corrections, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Also, the City Commission closed session minutes for the same date, June 6th.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote, or against, carried. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items A through C.
Second.
Any questions on that?
One.
Yes.
I'm, it's safe to assume that for, the Friends of City Hall will have their insurance updated by then, because I do see that it expires on 7/26. Okay, cool. All right. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkhammon.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next, we need to move on to board appointments, starting with the planning commission. I would like to appoint, I have to do these separately?
Yes.
I think I ask that each time. I'd like to appoint Brian Ross to the planning commission.
Do you need just a support?
Yes.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to Keith Jenkins. I'd like to appoint Keith Jenkins to the planning commission.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. Next, moving on to the tax of the Tifa. We have two vacancies with only one application. I'd like to appoint Craig May to the Tifa Board.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Did you say?
No.
Okay.
Nay.
Moving on to, we have none for the dangerous board, building board, Marine City Area Fire Authority, we have one application.
I make a motion to approve Mark Posey for the Marine City Area Fire Authority.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to the library board, we have two vacancies.
I'll make a motion to approve Ray Squires to the library board.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Could I get one more nomination?
I nominate Shannon Marilick. Am I saying that correctly? I don't know.
Support.
To the library board.
Motion support. Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And we still have one vacancy, oh no, you've got one more. You just gave us one, didn't you, Furis?
That was library board.
Oh, that was her. Okay. So we didn't get one for the historical?
We did not.
Okay.
So we still need dangerous building and historic.
We need a.
And a, and Tifa, we still.
Oh, that's right.
We need a contractor for dangerous building, is that correct?
That's correct. Building contractor, yeah. All right. Moving on to...
The dangerous building board, is that the, that's not the same board as the building Board of Appeals? Do we have that? We need to reappoint that, right? And get that going.
If we need it, yeah.
Because if, if, if a building question, out of the building code, it has to be done through the Board of Appeals. The city cannot give a variance for any of that that's in the building code. It has to be done, and there's certain people that have to be on it, architects, builders, residents, and it's like a seven-member board. The last board that we had was, was a hundred dollars for each professional and fifty dollars for a recording secretary, which is, if they want to go there, it's about $750.
Does that person have to be a city resident?
No.
Just a trade professional?
They have to be a professional, yeah. Joe Rockwood was our engineer.
It's a board that hasn't been utilized for quite a few years. If the commission would like it, we can start putting calls out for applications for that and start getting that into our list.
Is...
Well, I think some of the residents think that they can come to the board if they can't get what they can get in the building department, because of the code, and we don't have the authority to waiver the building code.
This board?
Right.
Let the communities convene those boards as necessary.
Right.
You've gone a long time without needing it. You could either staff it and...
Just put it, make sure we have it put in place.
Or convene it if you need it.
Okay. Maybe we should at least start putting some lists together for it. It'll be prudent to be ready for it in case we need it.
And that helps our building officials and our building people, because when they say no, the repeals, the appeal process is set up by rules and...
All right. Now, moving on to, if everybody's good, we're going to move on to 300 Broadway Parking Lot asphalting bids.
There are only two bids that we received for paving the parking lot at 300 Broadway, Asphalt Unlimited, and Jels Paving. Asphalt Unlimited's the lowest bidder, and Mike feels that they are a qualified bidder and recommends them for the job.
Did they do the beach?
No.
Who did the beach? Do you remember? They were just there.
Not these two, but another.
Hess.
Hess.
Oh, Hess. Oh, that's right.
It's usually the three we get, one of the three usually gets the job.
Is this the one that did the two streets last year?
No.
Was that Hess?
That was Jels.
All right. Do we have, are we going to get any type of somewhat of a guarantee? I mean, we had two roads paved and they've already cracked before a year, and now we got the gas company digging them up.
We can pay for a warranty. There's unfortunately not much there that they are willing to warranty. I talked a little bit about the crack along the seam line, and that's something that apparently is fairly standard when you're just repaving over an old road, and that's why they did the crack sealing on that.
Yeah. We've still got issues, though, with that one road.
Yes, and we're still working with them on some of the drainage as well.
All right.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve Asphalt Unlimited for $15,775.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So Asphalt Unlimited doesn't list that they're going to be striping the lot, but Jels does, so what would it cost for us to have it striped? Do we know that, what the difference is between?
I, I don't know the price difference, what it would cost.
I don't have any pricing either. I do know that Mike is going to be having someone come out and doing restriping on Water Street. I believe he said that he was going to have that done in conjunction.
Okay, because I mean, it's only 200, what? $225 difference in their striping. Even though if it was, you know, for the 225, maybe we should just do the other company who's going to stripe it while they're there.
Was that in the bid package, the striping?
Yep.
So the other one didn't follow up a bid?
Well, if it's in the bid package, then they should be doing it.
I just didn't know if it was, you know, cost effective.
We could make that...
Cost effective to have somebody else come in and stripe it.
We could have Mike check on that, for us.
It's right in there.
Or you can approve it subject to them doing the striping.
All right.
It's item six of the...
Of the quote.
Yeah. So on theirs, yeah, Jels.
Jels.
Does, but asphalt doesn't, must be.
Good question.
We could make it effective, see if they throw, if the striping is, if it was not added to their description too.
Couldn't take much to do, I mean...
No, doesn't.
Right, I just didn't know.
Throw can, spray paint the pushcart.
Yeah.
What it is.
Yeah.
But we could make a contingent.
You can move to approve the lowest bid contingent on it including the striping.
There you go.
I made the original motion.
I did. I amend my motion to approve Asphalt Unlimited for $15,775 contingent upon them, also including striping of the parking lot.
Support.
Any other questions now? All, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkhammon.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, let's move down to Resolution 018-2019, authorizing drain relocation.
So this is something, there is a development project going in at kind of the end of Metropolis, and when they were working on their plans for the project, they realized that the drain was not constructed in the location that the plans had it in. So, working with the, I should say, the developer's been working with the county, and this, in essence, is a fix to make what they did match what is on the plans.
This is the drain we've had trouble with, too, isn't it? Drainage through there? It's the one that goes down, remember?
I don't remember any issues.
Well, it wasn't draining down through there for a while. It's all the same one that goes along in there. Mr. Morse came that one time.
Yeah, it starts like over on West, actually, I think even out on King.
Yeah.
Yeah, it starts off on, right next to my property, my shop.
He's got it going from West Boulevard, he's got it right here, relocate. So this is the one that we had the trouble with before.
Yes.
And then they supposedly dug part of it out, and it's full of frag mighties and doesn't drain anyways.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? The planning commission had some questions on that, at the planning meeting, and they were wondering the route that all the heavy trucks are going to come in through the subdivision? And the, another way they could do it if they wanted to is bring a temporary road in from King Road.
Yeah, through the Metropolis.
With, for the heavy trucks, yeah. But it came up at the planning commission meeting. And to put a gravel road in there temporary for trucks, that would keep them off of our small residential street.
Did they, did planning recommend that, or?
It was discussion.
So are you, is planning done with the subdivision?
Yeah.
Because if you... Didn't tell him he has to do it, he won't do it.
Well, they, we questioned them about it. They are bonded, and they are liable for any damage. They are, they, there are weight restrictions on that road, and they are liable to maintain those weight restrictions. So, now it becomes an enforcement issue, obviously, but...
Well, at this time, we're just taking up the drainage season.
Right, yeah.
And this is just to correct an inconsistency.
Any other questions on it?
Well, let's hope it gets corrected, because it hasn't worked so good so far.
No. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkhammon.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to ordinance amendments, proposal for zoning and city code.
So, last year, we went through the process with Wade Trim to do updates on a lot of our ordinances that were out of date and inconsistent with state law. This, in essence, is going to be continuing that process. There are a number of items that we are looking to either update or, you know, make the process easier as part of the redevelopment-ready communities program through the state. Their cost estimate is, is in here, and just looking at this point for an approval to move forward with this proposal with Wade Trim.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
For not to exceed fee of $6,000.
Second.
Any questions on it? Yes, Lisa.
On the first page here, you've got the Nautica Mile District, which I thought we got rid of, didn't we?
We didn't get rid of it, we actually tabled it. One of the things that we were discussing was potentially expanding it over to Broadway. We got in a lot of the discussion about the subjective matter of the ordinance and how it became almost impossible to enforce, so we wanted to pull that out of the last section that we did and reevaluate what we want to keep and what we don't.
So is that what you're going to do here?
Yeah.
Because you're saying you're going to move it around to Broadway, and to me, it's been a pointless thing to start with, and then on...
There, there are some parts of the Nautica Mile District that do have a non-subjective impact.
Okay. The last page here, you have a list, and I see the first one, prohibition of temporary garages. I did some looking in there, I know we have a few in town, but there are some communities that create rules and govern them just like a regular garage. I know some people, it's kind of a hardship because they can't build, so I don't know if we want to look at both avenues or not. Not just totally eliminate, but try to work with people to see if, what other communities have done, and there's quite a few of them that do have rules that govern them, and they use their zoning laws and everything the same as a regular garage, but they have to be kept in a certain order, because...
That, that in essence would be part of the next step after we get through this not-to-exceed $6,000. The, once, if we get this approved and move forward and do these ordinances, then we'll delve a little bit deeper into the next section and get a new proposal.
So then you're not going to work on these, then, right away?
Not those right away, no.
Um, one, two...
These are the ones on the first couple pages.
All right. So, even though that you're not going to work on these right away, is the engine brake issue that we've been discussing, is that a PD issue, or is that for us?
That would be something separate from the planner.
Okay. Because we definitely need to do that, all right.
Yep, I've been working, talking to Jim about what we can do for that.
Any other questions on this? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkhammon.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Moving on to attorney legal services agreement.
Got my people here.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Just looking for a motion to approve the contract and continue on with our services with Mr. Datus.
Did we have an outside attorney look at this contract?
And you, you can terminate it anytime, anyway.
I'll make the motion that we approve the attorney legal services agreement.
Support. Motion support. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkhammon.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Oh, come on.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
I hear they're cheering it from the crowd.
Doing the wave out there.
Next, we're moving on to ordinance number 2019-009, amendment for initial business license introduction, first reading.
So there's been a lot of discussion regarding this proposed ordinance amendment. I've spoken to a number of commissioners and I've spoken to the attorney about kind of the ordinance and issues that we've been having and some potential proposed changes in addition to pulling the City Commission approval out of the ordinance, so that this really is an administrative thing. It's kind of black and white, either meet the intent of the law or you don't. So, at this point, I think with all the discussion that we've had, maybe we can have a little bit more discussion, but I think we're probably not quite ready for a first reading, because there's, I think, a little bit more changes that we'd like to see to this, based on some of the feedback that I've gotten, or I'm sorry, that I've received. One, one thing being, removing that City Commission opportunity. The attorney has recommended that we, in essence, have some appeal-type opportunity for people with their business license if they are denied from an administrative perspective, whether that be to myself or to City Commission, that's something that we can discuss. And then, also, talking to the clerk's department, getting a little bit more clarity about the division when a business license is required, whether you have multiple buildings or you have one building with multiple businesses in it. That's something for future reference for when Chris eventually retires, that we have that built into our ordinance, so that it's very clear stated, and we're making sure that we apply the same set of rules to everyone.
Some, some of the examples of that are, if Paul has a small strip plaza that has three units in it, so Paul's business is the rental of three units. That, to me, requires a business license to, to do that. Then you get into the question of, does each box then, within Paul's unit, require its own business license, which I suggest to you the answer is yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gets a little gray when Paul owns, and then Paul is one of those three. I still believe that Paul has two businesses, the one is owning the unit and renting it, and then he owns the, the one box which has a discrete business in it. You have other facilities I know about in the city where you have one owner and two things going on in one building, and we, we'd like to spend a little time making the language very clear on how those situations would apply, and, and just so that going forward, there's complete clarity with respect to the need for a business license. Normally, the grant or denial of a business license is one of, if they meet the criteria, you grant the license. It's not a discretionary call, per se. If they meet the criteria, generally, you grant the license, which is why in a lot of communities, it's done administratively, it's like a lot split. If you meet the lot split requirements, you get the lot split. If you meet site plan requirements, you normally get approved for the site plan. I always recommend that there be a relief valve, because somebody who's denied a, such a license should have some place to go for a review, and I don't necessarily like the fact that they would have to jump to court to seek a review, because now you're going to spend, you know, money getting some answer from somebody who knows a lot less than, than we all do. So one of the things we were talking about was, generally, your business licenses get approved if all the department heads sign off on it, it meets all the requirements of the department heads. That could free up Elaine, as the city manager, to be the appellate earer, or it could come back, you know, if somebody's aggrieved, they could come to the, to this body. But I hate keep putting appeal processes back to the City Commission where it, it becomes a little more, less rigid and a little more discretionary when it shouldn't be. So, we, we'd like to take a look at that.
Your, your zoning board of appeals would take care of most of that, wouldn't it?
No, not on a, not on administrative business license, because it really wouldn't be arising out of the zoning ordinance. It's more of a...
I mean, it is probably where the, they, they do it, the inspectors go in and do the, the fire, the electrical, and make sure the building's up to code, and then it goes back, and then they get their license.
Right. I mean, and, and if they meet it, they get it.
Right.
There's no discretion, it's not a judgment call, it's not a, eh, maybe we don't, you know, like that, so we're going to vote no. It's, it is what it is. know, like that, so we're going to vote no. It is what it is. But I'd still like to have a relief valve in your ordinance so that we don't get into situations of spending needless money on judicial relief because somebody who's denied that license, I mean, that's a pretty big deal. And quite frankly, if they meet the criteria, they should get the license.
What would you, now, how would a grandfather clause work? You said, you know, how you would like it written with the example you used with Paul, but somebody that right now is only required to get one business license, would they then have to get a second business license?
They'd have to comply with the ordinance, right.
It doesn't matter that we didn't make them before in the initial...
Not on these types of ordinances.
Okay.
I'd still like to see, even though it doesn't come to this board, that we see a list, because it's good for us to keep track of new businesses coming in. So I don't have a problem with eliminating them, but...
You could put that, you could keep that as an item on your consent agenda.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
I was thinking the clerk's report.
Or the clerk's report.
Where we, in essence, would have the, you know, please welcome the following new businesses, the business name, their address, and the owner's name.
It's just good for us to keep track.
Definitely.
You know what's going on?
Absolutely.
We would want you to be informed, definitely.
You're talking about grandfather clause in another municipality. When it changes ownership, it automatically loses the grandfather clause.
No, I was more, due to the fact we're changing during, through existing businesses that may have multiple, that right now, we're only forcing to do one.
Our business licenses are on our same fiscal year, so July 1st to June 30th. So we're already going to have business licenses before this is in place. And I think he was asking, are we going to have to go back to some of these businesses and say, we changed the ordinance, you need to get additional license?
On the next cycle.
On the next cycle.
On the next cycle.
Yeah, but I thought like, if you go back to where the chiropractor is where that building is, it was a license for the chiropractor. There also was a license in that same building for the gym, even though it was the one building. Kmart's got one building. Each store has to get...
Correct.
An individual license.
Right. And that's something that we would like language in the ordinance to make very clear for any future clerk when they're...
So if you have like a mall-type thing in one building, they should all have to...
And I think the mall itself is a business.
Right.
As the big box, right?
But each individual one would still have to get a license.
Exactly. I think we'd like an opportunity to make that a little bit clearer.
Anyone else have anything else? All right. So we'll just move on then to...
Yep. We'll try and bring back the draft at the next meeting with more language added into it.
Okay. Personal policy procedures.
Yes.
This has been an outstanding item for a while.
Yes.
And I've been kind of picking at it as I've had some free time. And as you can see from the manual, there are markups on almost every single page. I am certainly not an HR aficionado, nor do we really have one in our office. We have tapped on, tapped into the skills of an HR firm from time to time for some other things. This is something that if we want to move forward with this, we may want to consider going out to an HR firm and actually having them take a look at this and review it and come back with any potential changes for us. Because I think there's probably a lot of things that have changed since this was originally written. And a lot of things were just added to. As you can probably see, there's really no good rhyme or structure to how things are in this manual. I tried moving things around. It just got even messier and more complicated. But there are a lot of things that are probably missing that should be in here and some things that probably are in here that either need to be updated, especially some of the drug information, and some stuff that may not even be compliant anymore.
So you're looking for a motion to send this off to an HR specialist?
What I could actually do is I could, if the board preferred, I could actually solicit a proposal and just get a generalization of what something like that might cost to have them take a look at it. I'll get ahold of a firm that we've worked with in the past and see what kind of feedback I get from them.
Would our insurance company be interested in helping us out with this? I know they talked about helping out the policy and procedures with...
With the general orders for police?
Mm-hmm.
They might be.
I can contact staff on that as well.
Even if they want to just help us out financially with it or, you know, maybe even tap for...
Or review.
Yeah?
They might be interested.
Mm-hmm. Because it's a huge liability.
It's a good preventative measure on their part.
And I think that there are potentially some things, once we actually get one very good manual, that the next time we go through our other union contracts, that we might be able to template some of that language into those.
Yes, Lisa.
All right. Since I'm the one that's been on you for this thing for a number of years here, yeah, this definitely wasn't what I was hoping for. But I did do a lot of research on a lot of this stuff. And there is a lot to it, and we're lacking in an awful lot. Things that we got to get up to speed with today with issues of whistleblowers and guns and...
Federal government stuff.
Federal government stuff and cell use and bids and equipment and violence in the workplace. There's even gun policies, bullying. I mean, there's so much domestic violence, harassment, discriminating. I mean, there's a lot of things that we're just lacking in that we really need to cover.
Yeah, I think a lot of the stuff that had been added throughout the years was information that we got from our insurance company that was reviewing it about kind of the latest, greatest, new stuff. Add this, add this, add this.
And it's piecemeal.
Yes.
But I don't think you have to invent the wheel on this.
No. There's a lot can be boilerplate, but...
There's all sorts.
And it's out there. And I think if we tap the right sources, this can be a manageable project.
There's so many of them online that you can review.
Yeah.
And there's so many companies that actually have, here's one here, how to start and create your thing. You know, I mean, there's so many of them out there that you can review, and they're all basically all similar. Even in big cities, there's tons of them out there that you can look at. And that's what I was doing.
I think we could take a look at who's out there in the market, who can help us. And I don't think it's going to be as expensive as you might think because a lot of it is boilerplate language. It's always the enforcement of these documents that costs more than the document.
Well, and I also think restructuring it to the extent where we have a lot of, like, internal kind of Marine City things regarding things like longevity pay, or not longevity pay in this one, vacation time, personal time, what you can bank, cellphone stipends, things like that. We can parse that out, in essence, into kind of the Marine City section and then all of kind of the federal state guidelines for safety.
Of the generic stuff can be, right.
Yeah.
And one of the things, too, I'd like to see is, and I'll get with you afterwards, but I'd like to see some cost evaluations on some of the policies that we have and what it's costing us today for some of that per employee. I'm just curious to see what...
For like the bank time and stuff like that?
Bingo. So I got a little list for you that I'll give you afterwards, but there's a lot more to this. And I think, too, I noticed the, I noticed you had the sheet in the back here where you did the wage restructuring. But the problem is, is you didn't have the original old sheet that was actually two pages long. And I can see why you revamped that.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a hot mess, too.
Yeah. So, I mean, that was two pages of whatever. It's just, yeah, it was a mess. But...
I am in a bit of a quandary, though, with the wage and classification table, being that we do have a couple of new positions that are coming into place after Elizabeth's leaving with different roles and responsibilities than what we had in the past. And I'm not quite sure how to handle that aspect of it. I don't necessarily know if it needs to be a part of the policy and procedure manual or if it can be a standalone document.
Yeah, it might be a standalone. And we have to balance this all against our union issues as well to make sure we're not in conflict.
Mm-hmm. So then you're going to come back to us with more information?
If everyone's okay with that direction.
I'll give you my list.
Anybody else have anything else to add to that? All right. Let's move on to financial business. Disbursements including payroll for $548,535.39.
Make a motion to approve disbursements including payroll for $548,535.39.
Support. Questions or concerns on disbursements? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McCammon.
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Moving on to preliminary financial statement. Need a motion to file.
Still moved. Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Gary. Moving on to city manager's report.
All right. Body cameras are getting closer to being ready to use. They've been installed and they're still doing some troubleshooting, so not quite ready for that yet, unfortunately. I met with the architect from Partners in Architecture, and in July, at our July meeting, I should have a proposal before you for consideration for the services. Park improvements at both King Road and at the beach are progressing quite well. We've got a lot of the work done, but still a little bit more left to do. Once we get the work done at King Road Park, we'll be submitting for reimbursement for that grant. We did the election again for the pension board. The vote was 10-9 for Robert Kleeman, so he will be the retiree representative for the pension board. I received the fleece and vandebre contract for the water plant operations. I've since passed that off to the attorney to review. We're down to, I think, less than 10 days now before they are slated to take over the operations. So that should hopefully be in place before they start day one. We, fortunately, thanks to Michelle Goodrich's grant writing abilities, received a grant from SEMCOG for the water plant consolidation feasibility study. So a $40,000 grant. There is about an $8,000 match. I should be getting more details from SEMCOG about how we go through the process and what more they need from us in the near future. Would also like to welcome Jenna McQuiston to the DPW. She is the new part-time office manager. She'll be working five days a week, work five days a week, Monday through Friday. I think it's 11 to 4. I'm not 100% sure about those hours, but if you happen to see her, stop by and say hi.
That's it. Any questions for the city manager?
I have a question. What is going on with the website?
The RFP for website? I've started reviewing that. I hope to have something to you by the July meeting.
Do you really think it's necessary to completely upgrade our website?
So there's been a lot of lawsuits based on ADA complaints. And that's one of the biggest thing for government websites with all of the issues. I guess there's a company that's going around the state that is looking at websites and suing companies because they're not ADA compliant. That's one of the big things that we have a pitfall. We have had complaints about how it's hard to find things on our website. We do have probably more content, I think, than anybody else in the area, which is phenomenal. But it is dated-looking. The proposals that I got were very broad in price. I think I mentioned last time, about $4,000 to like $90 or something like that. So I'll just be going through those and working towards making a recommendation.
Because I was told that on our website, that if we did go with something new and ADA compliant, that we might be getting into like some major dollars to upgrade it. And, I mean, we're not the city of Warren or Sterling Heights. We're just little Marine City. And I just really wonder if, instead of completely redoing our website, maybe we could just look at, maybe even hiring somebody just to upgrade it monthly or something like that, instead of getting into, because I was told by another website person, because I just had a website done. And I was just kind of curious. I said, I didn't understand why they didn't put in for a bid. And he says, because it's huge. It's huge, big bucks. And that $96,000 bid, that's not uncalled for at all. And that's ridiculous for a website for a small city.
I agree.
Yeah.
I would definitely not recommend the $96,000. But there are some that are closer to the $5,000 range that do meet all of our requirements.
That amazes me. Because you almost have to optimize almost every word. And, I mean, it's just...
I know. It's crazy, the standards. And I don't think that the federal government has even, or federal or state, I'm not sure which one's regulating it, maybe you do both. Yeah. And, I mean, what's the cost of a lawsuit? You know, that's something that we have to take into consideration, too. You know, I mean, it's a one-time fee to, in essence, get the website converted. Everything has maintenance fees, you know? Even the WordPress that we use right now has ongoing maintenance fees every year. You have to pay to, in essence, use their cloud space, use their programming.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyone else, Lisa?
Okay. I know I talked to you, but since we're here, the sandbag issue. I know Mike has tried to work out a deal on the weekends so that he's not called in here all the time. So what is going to be the process for the people that desperate on the weekends, which I ran into last weekend?
I'm not sure if you noticed, but either yesterday or today, there was a company that has donated sand, and they did dump the sand outside of the DPW yard. So it's outside of the fenced-in area. Anybody can come pick up bags during the week anytime or get them at Lumberjack or any other local store or mail order. But we will have sand available out there.
Yay. Yay. Thank you. Because I know the people were desperate last Saturday, and I happened to be unlocking the lion's gate, and she thought I was doing the DPW. And she's like, oh, my God, I need 12 bags. And so I was able to get ahold of Mike, and he helped her out. And he said he was good with it. But I don't think he should have to come in here all the time if we can set something.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on then to commissioner privilege. Would you like to start us out?
No, I'm good. I have nothing, honestly.
All right. I got my red bag this week. Just want to let people know that we do have an ordinance out there about these handbills.
Do we have to go to Plan B?
We do receive one to let the, you know, call the city or the police department, I believe, and notify them that it's, you've received one and they're not compliant. Mine ended up in my driveway, so I picked mine up. And I did let the city know that I had received one, so.
Yep. And I gave Jim a heads up to be on the lookout.
Yeah, good. Because right down Market Street, you could see them all lined up in pretty little row.
Are we, are we ready for Plan B yet? I've got the dump truck.
So I just want to let the citizens of Marine City know that there is an ordinance out there and that they need to contact the city and let them know. Because unless they want it, then they have to do it properly to be brought up to the doorstep or in between the doors.
They've already been posting it, too, on Facebook, and I've been trying to tell them to turn it into the city if it's an issue, so.
Everybody let me know when we want to do Plan B. I've even warned Jackie Smith and a few other reporters. I'll let them know when I'm dropping it off. Is that it, sir?
That is it for me. Yep.
The only thing I have is, I just want the people to understand that when they don't like what the building official tells them, there's ways to get around it without going to your commission or your mayor because they don't have the right to waiver the state law.
No, we don't.
So there's ways. Go to your building official.
Anything else?
I'm good. I have nothing this evening.
Lisa?
I noticed the other day, one of our new Safe routes to school signs, just down here by Van Nuys Insurance, the LEDs are hanging. They fell off the sign. And I think we got to do a better job of getting people to understand what those are for and that they're supposed to stop when they're flashing and the kids are trying to cut across the street. Because I see a lot of people that they're pressing the thing. They're a little hard to see and people are... Because I see a lot of people that they're pressing the thing, they're a little hard to see, and, and people are blowing right through it with their cars. And so I know there was an incident over it by the school, and somebody turned that into the police, because I, I think we just haven't educated everybody of what those crosswalks mean with the signs, and maybe we can get something for that.
See if the police can put together something and put it out on
Yeah, and the only other thing is, just everybody have a safe 4th of July, don't blow yourself up, please be careful with, and be responsible with the fireworks. And follow the rules, the rules have changed, so please go in and look at our stuff we've updated to the requirements, so it's different this year.
Thanks.
Nothing.
Nothing? I don't have a whole lot, we've seen the, the letter went out from Senator Peters to the director of Customs and Border Protection. So hopefully we get an answer within a few days on the issue with the ferry, and hopefully we can move forward. And I did talk to attorney that was still looking at a class action suit for the businesses and the, for downtown, and he's still working on it. So he has found some legal recourse, but it's been more through the Canadian court system than the American side. So hopefully we will hear some more information on that soon. Also, I'd just like to remind everybody, please look up the new fireworks information. Chief Langston's standing here, and he's nodding his head, we don't want to go out on fireworks accidents and overuse. Please remember you've got animals and small children in the community that sometimes don't deal well with fireworks. So please be courteous to your neighbors. And with that
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried.